I'm gonna call the December Board Meeting, the Bryan City Schools Board of Education to order. If you could please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rob, if you could call the roll.
Emily Ewall.
Here.
Cyndra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Ryan Miller.
Here.
Glenn Newcomer.
Here.
Thank you.
You should have received before you copies of the November Board Meeting minutes. If there's any questions or comments, please present them now. If not, I'm willing to accept a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Glenn.
Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Public participation, we do have Brad Plummer is here, would like to address the board, and I'd like to give Brad a few minutes if he could. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm Brad Plummer. I am a grandfather of Jace Nichols, who was left on the bus for about thirty hours. Just we as a family have some concerns about how that transpired and how all the failsafes broke down from the beginning, like all the way through the end. And, you know, we basically had some general questions on that we know that you possibly don't have the answers to. But some of them, as far as, like, you know, we kind of like to know, like, at what temperature the bus farm was at, he was left in. And like, as far as like, the bus drivers doing their pre-trips and stuff, you know, whether he was, you know, when he was found, whether he was found at the bus farm, whether he was found at the school, and whether that second bus driver also didn't do his pre-trips and stuff. Kind of having said some of that stuff, you know, as far as Bryan City Schools, you know, it's a good school. You know, we got, you know, we just had...
We're just deeply upset.
Yeah.
Understand. We understand. It's no problem.
Brad, appreciate you coming tonight and expressing your concern and the fairness concern. I, as Board President, very upset as well.
Yes.
You know, I, we have a full investigation. I cannot at this time because I don't have some of the answers I know you're looking for. But I promise you, we're gonna share with you what we find and continue to make sure that your grandson, that your grandson, sorry, is in good care, as are all the students of Bryan City Schools. That's of the utmost importance. Their safety and security is huge, and we need to do better than I feel like we did in this instance.
Right.
So, I appreciate you coming tonight, appreciate your candor. Thank you for also being accepting of saying Bryan City Schools is a good school district. I appreciate that, that compassion too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board?
I think all of us board members, I think all of us as board members, as grandparents or parents, as member of our community, we totally understand your concern. I'm not gonna say I'm upset, I'm angered. Anger is a more accurate word that describes my feelings in regards to this incident. I've been on the board for nineteen years, and one of the things that is paramount to us is the safety of our children. And people have responsibilities that we assign to them in the transportation to and from, and the care of the children, once they are in, under our supervision. And this incident goes beyond what I can believe actually happened, because especially in regards to the age of the child involved.
Yes.
I was shocked when I initially heard this, and I guarantee that we are going to get down to the bottom of, we're gonna find the details, and you deserve answers, and you deserve action.
Right.
And I appreciate you coming forward, I appreciate you being understanding as well, but without a doubt, this incident, it will never happen again. I can't promise it, but trust me, that we as a board are gonna take action.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I would echo what Glenn said, and I'm sorry this happened to your child.
Likewise, having grown kids, I...
This is the mother and father.
Yeah.
We're sorry.
We are very sorry.
If no further items, we will move on at this time. Thank you. Further public participation, nobody can be EAs, moving on to Communications and Fort County Report. Cyndra, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening. I would like to say that coming up on January ninth, Fort County will be hosting their yearly open house, where sophomores are invited, as well as their parents. It's from five to seven thirty, and this will give the families the opportunity to visit the labs. Also, during the month of January, the school clubs will start to compete at the local level. So as our students compete, I will keep you informed, is how they do. And one last thing, Fort County is starting to gear up for Skills USA Regional Competition. They're very excited to host this event. This contest will be February seventeenth. There will be twenty-seven different career centers that will be involved, with over a thousand students competing in thirty-four different contests. So this is the first time the Fort County's had an opportunity to host this, so it's very exciting. So they're setting a lot of plans in motion now. That's it for now?
Thank you, Cyndra.
Thank you.
Treasurers' Report, Rob.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with our financial reports for the month ended November thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Our cash reconciliation report provides us with our balances. Farmers and Merchant State Bank, twelve million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Outstanding checks and adjustments, total four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. Investments at Star Ohio, three million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. At Morgan Stanley, fifteen million, nine hundred and three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars, and at State Bank, six million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Change funds and petty cash funds total seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Total funds on hand at the end of November, thirty-seven million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Of those funds, our general fund balance at the end of the month was thirteen million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Our bond retirement fund, one million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Permanent improvement fund, one million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Our construction funds, the LFI fund, total one million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and two dollars. Our local share fund, total thirteen million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, twenty-nine dollars, and the state share, total four million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, thirty-two dollars. Once again, total fund balance, thirty-seven million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Our SM two report, our revenues so far this year are about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, ahead of budget, and our expenses are about seventy-eight thousand dollars, under budget, so we have a positive variance, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars at this time, the end of November. Any questions regarding those reports? Not, we'll move on to appropriations. Our appropriation total is twenty-seven million, three hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Changes this last month included district activities of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, an increase there. Bond retirement fund, a decrease of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Permanent improvement fund increases of one hundred thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. And student activities, increase of three thousand, four hundred dollars. And our tournament fund, an increase of two thousand, fifty-one dollars. Increases during the month totaled one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Any questions on the amended appropriations? If not, we'll move on. We ask the board's authorization to establish Fund Number Two Hundred dash nine eighty-one A for our Fly Angling Club, that was formed this school year, and authorization to establish a fund for the Light Shine Singers. We've always had their funds co-mingled with the Vocal Department, and we want to split those out for better tracking purposes, at the request of the conductor of the vocal group, Mr.?
Lupo.
Lupo, thank you. Donations this last month, to the Bryan Wrestling Club, from the Bryan Wrestling Club to the wrestling program at the high school, three hundred and twenty-five dollar donation. From Newland Quest to the wrestling program, a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars. From Newland Quest to the football program, a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars. From Newland Quest to the band program, six hundred dollars. Also from Newland Quest for the Chromebook Insurance Program, donation of five hundred dollars. And also from New Quest to the Bear Bag Program, a donation of five hundred dollars. From the Bryant Area Networking Club to the Bear Bag Program, a donation of five hundred dollars. From Image Pro Group, book bags for the Bear Bag Program were donated. From Dean and Ann Spangler, a sum of twenty-five hundred dollars was donated to the band for their upcoming trip to the bowl game. And from Mrs. Vivian Taylor, a sum of one hundred and fifty dollars was donated for library books at Washington Elementary. We thank each and every one of those organizations and individuals for their generosity supporting our district. We have a resolution asking you to pass. This will be a first step in placing our emergency levy on the ballot in May of this coming year. Our emergency levy is a renewal, this will not be a new tax. It's a levy that's been on the books for several years. It generates one million, nine hundred and ten thousand dollars per year for our school district, and that levy will expire in two thousand and seventeen. So we will ask your permission to have passed that resolution.
Can I clarify just a second, Rob, with that? The name "emergency levy" implies something that's not, this is not a fiscal emergency, there's no...
It's not a fiscal emergency, no. It's a type of levy that is, has been adopted by state legislature somewhere along the line. The word "emergency" was provided as a title, we don't know why, but like you say, Emily, it's not...
But it's really a misnomer, because this is just a matter of renewing a levy that's already been in play. This is a metaphor, we've talked about that.
Yeah, we look at it as an operating levy. It's a fixed-sum levy that provides us with a fixed sum of money each year, and anyway, it'll be on the ballot next year for that.
I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
I think a good clarification also for the public is to know that the first collection won't take place until the calendar year of two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, it's currently being collected, because it's on the books now, but that's absolutely correct.
So this will move forward.
That's correct. If passed, it'll be renewed for a new five-year term that starts in calendar year eighteen. That's correct.
And the money goes into the general fund.
This is general fund.
And so it's used for operation purposes.
That's correct. That's correct. Next item on the agenda, we have our organizational meeting for two thousand and seventeen. By law, we must have this meeting by January fifteenth, and we would like to place that on the books for January ninth, that's a Monday night, seven PM. That'll be our organization meeting, first regular meeting of the new calendar year. Also, as part of that, the board will need to appoint a president pro tem to conduct the meeting until the new president of the board is elected. So with that, we'll stop.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Would you like to nominate somebody for the president pro tem?
I would nominate Ryan Miller.
I will second that.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Glenn.
And besides that, we will do the rest of the items, approve the rest of the items on the report at this point in time. Tom Lingby.
Yes.
Ryan Miller.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Cyndra.
Yes.
Thank you. We have two construction change orders for your approval. Change Order One Oh Nine is for the Bryan Elementary School Construction Project, that is for fungal remediation in the project, for the project. That change order is fifty thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Change Order One Thirteen is also for the elementary project, and it's for all of our technology and equipment that will be used in the project. That total is nine hundred and six thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. That was part of GMP four, they pulled it out, decided to do it this way. Any thing you want to add on that, Diana?
Just in the technology, it's really not a change, it is, it was originally in the project, we were waiting to determine that we were satisfied with the bid specs, and they want to include it in GMP four, where it originally was located. So they're handling it as a change order, even though it's not technically a change.
I'll move to accept the change orders.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Cyndra. Thank you, Tom.
Ryan.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Old business, Diana, any construction update you'd like to share with us at this time?
Yeah, we're gonna shift our focus this month to the pre-K to five project. So we have completed most, not all, but most of the demolition within the building, and we're really seeing some great progress in the reconstruction renovation phase. So we're fortunate enough to take a look this week, and if we start in the academic wing, which is probably seeing the most progress, we actually have drywall up, we have classrooms taking shape, we have HVAC systems being put in, we have electrical being run, new plumbing where needed. Down in the cafeteria area, the commons area, the cafeteria expansion has been completed, and they just poured the cement floor back in for that entire section. The kindergarten wing is completely demolished, right now it's just an empty hallway, so they'll start the rebuild there, as well as the special ed area and the preschool area. And then, we're still working on some demolition in the, what was one set of locker rooms to make way for the music area. The gym right now is being used as a staging site for much of the equipment. All of the floors that we are going to keep, such as the terrazzo and the downstairs gym floor, are being protected. We are going to replace the upstairs gym floor with a new wood floor as part of this renovation. And they're working towards getting the new elevator. They will, there will be two elevators in this building. One will service the academic wing, and one will service the upstairs and downstairs gymnasium. So I was, this is the first time I've been in the building since August. The work site is very clean, it's very organized. I was very impressed with how much progress has been made to date, and I would ask Glenn, who was with me, or Tom, if I missed anything that you'd like to share.
That was very complete, however, you know, it's been a couple months since I've been through the building myself, and I just want, want to say that I was totally amazed at the progress that is being made. The second floor is progressing really well, the walls are up, I look, going into the classroom settings, it's amazing, just a perception I have, the area seems to be larger because of the design. When you look at where the construction project is relative or comparing to where we were a year ago in the high school project, we're a couple months ahead of schedule, as compared to where we were a year ago. I mean, because the walls are in, the windows are in, they're able to heat it, maintain it well, and because of that, the working conditions, you can tell that the environment is just very favorable for them to make very steady progress. The areas where they expanded and demolished and have poured the new concrete in, it's great to see the expanded cafeteria area, how they're going to be able to address and serve that many students very efficiently and very timely. Seeing how the areas are blocked off for the different grade levels, that's going to be very, very special as well. When you talk about the security at the front of the building, for the entrance, for the visitors and for the students, much improved situation over what it was before. And so the overall project, to me, I'm pretty excited about this, and I feel very confident, at least as of today, that we should be right on schedule to open doors this fall, like normal. And I think the public's gonna be really surprised at the transformation that this building is going through right now. It's, I can't even begin to describe how wonderful it's gonna be, but it carries some of the same characteristics of our high school, and as far as forward-thinking, and with the technology component that's also gonna be integrated with it, I think it's without a doubt gonna be one of the nicest K-five, K-five buildings around. I can't imagine anything like it in the area, but it's wonderful.
Thank you.
Tom, you good?
I was in it just the other day, I was in it a couple, two, three weeks ago, and yeah, the progress is significant, as Diana has already shared, they have made a significant amount of progress in the last couple weeks. Checking with the superintendents, both for Midwest, as well as for Rudolph Libby, they both feel that the unknowns have all been pretty much exposed, so they don't anticipate any delays in that regard. Absence, delays in material, or some type of a snafu like that, they feel fairly optimistic at this point in time, that they're on, well, they are on schedule, they both feel they're on schedule at this time, and absence, like I say, some unknown, they think we should be able to move along. Obviously, weather will come into play a little bit, because they do have some outside work that has to be done, roofing in the cafeteria area, and some of the flat roof areas are gonna have a membrane roof put on, while they need some weather for that. So there's a couple little challenges like that, but like what Glenn said, it's not, the challenges are not of the nature that they experienced on the six to twelve buildings, so yeah, I think at this point, there's reason to be fairly optimistic.
Good. Thanks, Tom. Any questions from the board for them, otherwise moving on to new business? Under new business, just brief discussion as a reminder that at the annual organizational meeting, make sure we have board officers, will be elected, oath of office will be administered to the five board members, establish our service fund, board committees, meeting schedule for seventeen, and OSBA membership will be considered at that time. Also, one item that I know is on the agenda for tonight is that the Fort County Career Center would like to have their nominee for their committee member from our board, our board member from our board, be considered. Any discussion there?
Cyndra, you guys stay on, aren't you?
I would like to continue.
Very good.
Then I will nominate you.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Tom.
That was a slam dunk.
Yeah.
Glenn.
Of course, changed your mind.
Emily.
Yes.
Cyndra.
I'm staying.
Tom.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Cyndra.
I'm staying.
Tom.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Yes.
Cyndra, I'll notify Fort County as well, but I did not receive, I looked again, the paperwork.
I was told one went out, but maybe not, so that's okay.
All right. So we'll let them know.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Cyndra.
Well, thank you.
I'm willing to serve again. Superintendent's Recommendations, Diana, when you're ready. Sorry.
No, you're fine, I'm just writing myself a note. So tonight, on administrative recommendations, we have the approval of the six to twelve building curriculum guide for the school year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, as well as the approval, nothing in the athletic handbook is changing, with the exception of the student drug testing policy, which I've put in front of you in hard copy, and you can see the track changes that are included within it. And that will also be for this school year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. We are already beginning to prepare for the next school year. We have teachers, I've shared with you via the exhibits, the changes in the curriculum guide, we are adding some additional course offerings for our students, as well as just continuing to provide some of the new courses that we had this year, which are really taking off. And so those changes are in your exhibits, and then with the student drug testing policy, mainly some wording changes from athletic director to administrator, because we made that change with that position. So I'd like you to look through those, and I'd be glad to answer questions on either item.
And there was a change in the appeal process as well?
Yes, there was a change in the appeal process. We found a spot where we had some concerns, so we checked with other area schools and with the company themselves, and this was their suggestion.
If no other questions, I'm willing to accept the motion for the administrative recommendations.
I'll subdue.
Thank you, Cyndra.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Emily.
Yes.
Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Cyndra.
I'm staying.
Tom.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself on my calendar. Go ahead.
Under personnel recommendations, we would like to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Dave Eckler, our bus driver and custodian, effective December thirty-first of two thousand and sixteen. Dave has been a longtime employee with Bryan City Schools, and I saw him yesterday, and he is thrilled to be starting a new chapter in his life, proudly brought me his keys, said he might be back in a month, he would let us know how it went. His wife's to-do list might be longer than ours was, so he might, he might show back up. But we wish him well and thank him for his many years of service.
Just a little story about Dave, sorry to interrupt.
No, you go.
She was showing us this picture that one of our artists from the high school group made of him last year, a charcoal drawing, and this picture went to Columbus and several other competitions and won of awards.
Oh, that's very cool.
So it was very nice, and Dave was very proud of that, so it was really a kind of a nice parting gift to give him to take with him as he went, but he was very happy with that.
That's nice, cool. We also have two teacher resignations, and I need to explain a little bit about these. So Deb Taverney, who is a grade eight intervention teacher, her husband has accepted a new position out of state, and so they will be moving and moving away from the area. And then Laura Springer was a retired teacher who helped us out with a late opening at the beginning of the year, and would like to spend more time in retirement. But both have agreed that they will come back in January and work with us to get an appropriate substitute and some transition time. So the effective date of these resignations will be no later than January twenty-eighth, but may in fact occur before that. So that is why you see the generality in that resignation. And again, we thank them for their service to Bryan City Schools and to our students, and wish them well in the next phase of their careers. Recommend that we hire Ashley McCandless, two to five campus, recess and classroom aide, four point two five hours per day, zero years experience, effective November twenty-ninth. And Taryn Walls, two to five arrival, preschool one-on-one aide, preschool... And again, we thank them for their service to Brian City Schools and to our students and wish them well in the next phase of their careers. Uh, recommend that we hire Ashley McCandless, two to five campus recess and classroom aide, four point two five hours per day, zero years experience effective November twenty-ninth. And Taryn Walls, two to five arrival preschool one-on-one aide, preschool bus aide, four point seven five hours per day, four days a week, zero years experience effective twelve, six of sixteen. Would like to transfer Rob Goodlive to second shift custodian position. So Rob will be transferring into, he will be doing Dave's custodial work here at the fieldhouse as well as some additional custodial work at the six to twelve building. Um, we have found that that building and its ins and outs is quite a feat to keep up to the excellence that we expect. So we're gonna need a little bit more assistance there and Rob is transferring to that position. Um, we have a couple of change in hours for classified staff. Kelly Dean, educational aide to five point seven five hours per day effective November fourteenth. Jackie Curl, bus driver to three point five hours per day, five days a week. An educational aide van driver, two point five hours per day, two days a week. And that will be effective January second, two thousand seventeen. Our swim team has exploded and we have a number of students participating in that program. We had one coaching position that remained within our supplemental contracts. Lisa Frame and Leslie Harsala will share that contract so that we can get more, um, support for that team, both boys and girls. Volunteer Christie Mead for our athletic department. And then you see some substitute, uh, classroom teachers and substitute classified, uh, personnel to approve as well. Any questions?
Ryan, I'd like to pull out the hiring classified staff from the general motion to approve.
Okay.
Otherwise I will make a motion to approve the other recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Uh, Glenn, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Tom's there.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Based on that separate recommendation for hiring classified staff, which would be Ashley McCandless and Taryn Walls.
She moved.
Thank you, Glenn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Syndra. Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
No.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, under points of information, um, board meeting dates, we have January Board of Education organizational regular meeting, which we announced earlier, will be January ninth, which is a Monday evening, starting at seven o'clock. With the business advisory committee, which will meet on March fourteenth at seven A M. in the fieldhouse conference room. LPDC meeting on March second, two thousand seventeen at, um, eight A M. in the fieldhouse conference room. And due to the fact that today is the first day of Christmas, uh, break, winter break, we have excused our administrators this evening. So that concludes my report at this time.
Or the organization meeting on the ninth, we're going to also have the regular meeting after that?
Correct.
Okay, I'm not gonna be able to be at the January meeting. I'm going to be on a business trip that whole week until the, uh, to the thirteenth of January.
Okay.
If no further items before the board, there is a need for the board to go into executive session under, uh, item A on the agenda, the appointment, deployment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensee or student. Uh, also item B, the purchase of property for public purposes or the sale of property at competitive bidding. And item, I don't believe we're conversing.
D?
D?
D for negotiations.
D, preparing for, conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees. Sorry. Thank you.
That's right.
I'm willing to accept the motion to enter the executive session. So move. Thank you, Glenn.
Second.
Thank you, Tom.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.